Evening.
Good evening.
Thursday, December 1st, City of Planning Board hearing. We have a published agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
First on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District, 4 Union Street. You have the proponents here?
Yes.
Grab a seat.
I'm Paul Mirello, we're attending the over half of each other's hour, am I right? What I'd like to do is, um, we'll explain the project and I'll answer any questions you may have. The locus is located at number 4 Union Street, which is in the Green Bush area. It's adjacent to the proposed brewery. You probably have an idea where it is. I believe about a year, 10 years ago, Mr. Hallen approached the planning board for site plan approval, to construct this existing commercial building with some apartments above it. And this is the existing condition plan. It shows the building, the green is the open space. There's some, there's a small gravel parking area here, there's a mailbox, sidewalk in the front. And there's parking for eight spaces off of Union Street.
That was done under an existing site plan approval?
Pardon?
There's an existing site plan approval here that...
And do you know, did that consist of the entire property that you have outlined in yellow? It wasn't subdivided or anything, right?
No, recently, no, this...
Well, I mean, back in 2010?
Mr. Hallen used to own this?
Okay.
House, and this was part of the Village Overlay Special Permit?
Mm-hmm.
Which he chose not to develop. And after that, I went on and divided this house off of this property and sold it to Mr. Fagan. This is where the proposed brewery is.
Right.
So we bought it from Mr. Fagan, then sold back half of it. That's a good one.
Excuse me, what is it proper for me to say?
Could you identify some?
I'm Stephen Longeiro, I live in the neighborhood, I'm going to take this place.
Yes, we will get a chance to have everybody have their voice heard, okay?
Sure.
Right now, we're going to let the proponents present the project, and we'll talk with the board when we go to public for the show.
The proposal is to construct a 26 by 40 foot mixed-use building, which would look like a two-story cape. The proposed building is in brown, with these sidewalks going into the front doors. This is an existing parking area, which he would maintain for two vehicles, and there's an additional five in the existing paved area. This area right now is paved, but we do stripe it and put five more in there. Under this, there's only five spaces required, but we will provide some here and through here. What this plan shows is the stormwater runoff system, there's two sets of infiltrators, there's one here to the rear-hand corner of the building, and there's one in this area here. Again, the parking is to the rear and to the side. The utilities are such that the existing building has a sewer line coming down tied into the street. Proposal is to put a Y connection here and tie this building to that same sewer line. Likewise, there's a water service coming in from the street, it's a two-foot water service. Well, it'll be rerouted around the building, and the preference is to tap into this line, put a meter on this building, so that this building...
Is this all a single lot? Is the yellow lines I'm looking at the lot lines?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a lot line here.
Thank you.
The lot's 20,260 square feet. The mailbox that was in this area would be moved over to the left ward to accommodate the building, and the landscaper in the front. The landscaping that would be put around the building, the typical landscaping you see around the house. We did ask for a waiver, the cover letter, so it would consider it a separate landscaping. These plans have the details of the stormwater system, sheath number, the separate sheet here is part of the stormwater system, construction arrangements for stabilizing the entrance here, construction, etc., under rail, showing the building. There's a series of standard notes on the plan. These plans were reviewed by Peter Palmer, our Merrill Associates. Today, we received some comments from the forensics, and the engineering department, and the fire department. We did speak to the engineering department on it today. A lot of them obviously don't see this particularly, whether they have any issues with the strict of the sewer floors are very small, within 200 mil apartments on top. At the lower level, we have about 200 gallons of water a day, and we have street vendors, and they have 200 gallons total, or 420 gallons of water a day. That's based upon 905 flows, but the actual flows would probably be about 75 percent of the same as the most. The sanitary services and that's through there. There's very little grade change in here, unless they put, unless they were going to put a silver along the roof. Architectural plans were reviewed by the design review board. There was a set submitted with an application, subsequent to that, John Digney with the design review board, and they did have some changes and some suggestions, and he's incorporated those into these plans, mainly these entrance doors here, and the dormers are going to stay where they are. And I believe the treatment of the windows, as far as blinds or shade, if you do a sound survey of the system. The roof line is pretty straightforward, it's a cape. This is the side view of the windows. The entrance to the apartments could be in the back, to the rear of the building, there'd be a set of stairs going up to the upper floor. And this is the left side of the building, as you can see from the window screen. I think that on my presentation, you answer any questions?
Yeah. Should we hear from Laura first, or do you just have clarifying questions?
Nope.
Let's hear from Laura.
Just a couple of things. There were a number of comments from different departments, as Paul mentioned. We did get a positive comment from Merrill Engineers that the plans generally comply with the stormwater standards. The design review committee had a lot of detailed comments, they wanted brass cake plates on the doors and onion lights, and, you know, some things to kind of dress the building up a little bit. And they didn't seem to be negative about the building, but they did want it to look residential and as attractive and sort of homey-looking in a, you know, nice aesthetic way as possible. Because it's a mixed use, it does need to have a sprinkler system, and the committee mentioned that. What the DPW seemed to be yelling at was that they want to get calculations on sewer flow, even if the flow is small, just so they know exactly what the flow is, and they know the pipes are sized for it. The site is, it's a little bit of a unusual-shaped property because it's got kind of a lot of space at the back, and of course, the space that everyone wants to use is what's up near the front of the street. It doesn't really need to be a setback, it's supposed to have a minimum 10-foot setback, and on Old Country Way, I believe it's five and a half, so the setback is a little bit, it's a little bit tight. And the whole site, actually, when you look at the existing pavement for the contractor's building, and all the activity on the site, it's tough to fit in a mixed-use building there. It does have the two small apartments, I think they're going to be, you know, more or less like studio apartments, they're a little bit over 400 square feet, so they're not, you know, they're not like for families, they'd be for one person. And it's not a bad location for office space, there's office space across the street, and it might contribute to a little bit more of a village atmosphere than, you know, like say, the contractor's building. But I think it's a little tight for it right there. It should really have a little more of a setback, but they just can't get it in there. When we were talking with the design review, one of the things that came up was the difficulty fitting in a deck off the back, they really wanted to put a deck on the rear of the building, but the supports for the deck were going like just over the edge into the parking area. So, you know, obviously, that wouldn't be a good, a good situation to have. So, other than that, it's a tight fit, you know, there aren't any, you know...
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, turn.
Let's, let's hear, we have somebody here. Who do we have here?
Um...
Here from Merrill, right?
Yes.
Let's just hear their report.
As Laura said, we had reviewed the plans, we had violated the compliance with the stormwater management, and we had issued the original review letter. Subsequent to that, we did receive the revised calculations, which included calculations for the 10-year and the 100-year storm event. Did meet requirements of no increase in runoff as a result of that. The only other thing that we had commented on, actually, two other things, was we were just suggesting the increasing the erosion control, so it encompassed this whole area. And the original plan had the mailboxes farther down here, or where they are right now, in order to actually fit the subsurface infiltration in for the roof recharge. It was going to encroach upon the mailbox area. The revised plan moved the mailbox area and basically extended the sidewalk, as it is now, with the brick and the concrete, to meet that sidewalk area. Other than that, we were satisfied, and as it is now, we're in agreement with the plan.
And the runoff before in any particular direction is no greater than it was before? Or the runoff total on the lot?
It's actually a little bit less because the area occupied by the house is now roof runoff, of course, and all of the roof runoff is infiltrated, including 100-year storm, so it'll be a little bit less.
And in general, where does the, where does the flow go?
The runoff for the roof runoff is divided into two sections, basically down the middle of the house, half of it will go into an infiltration system here, and there's a, it doesn't show on this sheet, but there's an infiltration system...
So, surface runoff, is it going to the street or is it going back?
The surface runoff basically comes down this way, from this side of the site, and down that way, from the other side. So that area that was, used to be grass, is now occupied by building, and all of that building runoff is now going in into this ground.
And can I ask you, was this analysis done with the original permit for this lot, and then that analysis was then revised? Does that happen?
I did not review, the only thing I reviewed was the analysis for the additional work. So I did not review anything relative to the soils or the previous, it's part of that. There were soils done for the new work, and they were satisfied for it, but for the existing condition, I didn't analyze whether the system was sized correctly for the existing runoff or any of those components.
So you just looked at the incremental increase or the incremental decrease?
Correct.
From that particular area, not the whole lot size?
That's right. It was basically that that changed. They approached it in as much as the area they were changing, being going from grass to pavement to roof, and whether they could adequately dispose of that runoff. So that, we were pretty limited in what we...
Okay. So you didn't look at the original design? Right. Okay. Do we have any more consultants or anybody else here?
Yeah, why don't you make two quick comments? These are existing infiltrators for the building. These are fairly large, compared to what we have for the new building. When we did the original site plan, we, there was stormwater, started out for that.
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing you, Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry, these, these are the four existing stormwaters?
Okay.
Systems for the existing building. When we did the original building, we did do stormwater calculations, and what this building down here is doing, we're putting two more here to keep out the roof runoff for the building. Right now, there's water from the roof going into these infiltrators, but the water from here is going out onto the street. Once we put the building there, the water that would have gone into the street is being captured now to defend the roof, to be recharged on site. The soil test bits that we did there showed that, they're very, very good infiltration rate, so it's probably less impact, even on this new building than it was before.
Yeah, I was trying, just trying to understand whether it changed the surface flow pattern of runoff by putting essentially a little dam in the middle?
No.
Does it change, do you have higher volumes on either side going? Does it change any of that?
That, no, that's a very, that's a relatively flat site.
Yeah, I haven't been great.
And the green area around the house, that is just the old area, which will stay, but that's very obvious because it seems so... The drainage ban has really changed, basically it's going through the downtown to Old Country Way, to Union Street as well, that the whole area is very, very...
I'm trying to get a sense whether we, there are spot areas that have increased flow that's going to cause a problem for the neighbors, basically, or for the town?
Just one thing I'd like to point out in your duty, the city district, the front yard, it's a back requirement, it's a minimum of five feet, the front yard on Country Way, in the Green Bush area, which we're proposing by...
Let's get the questions from the board here.
Okay.
We will get to your... First of all, I have to tell you that I'm a huge advocate of mixed use, and was involved
in the Village Overlay District. However, that said, I have a real problem with this proposal. First of all, according to our zoning bylaws, page 75, Country Way and the Driftway, Green Bush, five feet, this is not Country Way, this is Old Country Way. It is labeled Old Country Way. I drove down there and looked at the lot, the proposed lot, and as far as I am concerned, it's not big enough to swing a cat on. It's too small, the use that you are proposing is too big, it is too intense, and it is too much for that particular location. I find it somewhat disingenuous when, in your application, you say that you have 147 feet per rear access. Yet I look at this plan and I see a curb, not too far in back of, probably not more than, if 10 feet at all. You have, the other thing that I have a huge problem with are site distances. I'm a big thing about site distances and public safety, and this is very important to me. And when you come down Old Country Way and you want to swing onto Union Street, you put this building there, you are impeding, as far as I am concerned, site distances along with moving the mailboxes. So as it stands right now, in no way, shape, or form can I support this project. It's too big, it's too much, it's too intense, for a myriad of reasons, setback notwithstanding, height notwithstanding. If you had come in here, I think, with a proposal to add on to your existing building, I could have dealt with that. But you are putting a proposed structure on a 20,000-square-foot lot that still has a huge, huge building on it as well. So, you know, I'm all for commercial development, I'm all for mixed use, but this is just, in my opinion, it is too much. It is too dense, and as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't work. Thank you.
I think her position is pretty well-defined.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go for it.
Talk to me, show me the access that you perceive to have for the pedestrians going into the, into the business portion, and show me how they're going to go into the resident portion.
There's a sidewalk on the street now, and it's going to continue around the mailboxes. There's three separate brick sidewalks that would go from the main sidewalk into the front of the building.
Where do they park their car?
Parking here, they could park around the back there.
How many, how many parking spaces are there total?
Well, there's five required, and we're showing seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The people living in the apartments are parking these spaces here, and walk up the stairs in the rear of the building. There's no access to the apartments in the front.
Actually, there's one front door. The center front door will give them access to the apartments upstairs.
How's that work?
The two business entrances are the left and the right, the center, the center door here, and we just, the center stairs above the...
So that's the primary access there?
One of them, and also the, both the rear entrances.
So the apartments are going to get assigned parking spaces?
Yes.
I think Ann is spot-on in terms of the intensity for the corner. Yeah, I think it's a very unique neighborhood down here, so I think you're probably, one of residents or more than one of the residents, but I think it's a pretty intensive use putting on that corner. They'd probably live with that intensity if it was on a straight part of the street as opposed to being on the corner. That'll hold me for right now.
Okay. Do you happen to know the setback, I should know this, for the proposed brewery from the sidewalk or for the street? Because like, my main thing is trying to maintain like a fairly cohesive street wall.
I think it's between 10 and 15.
So then this would be forward quite a bit? I was wondering, I know that from the first proposal, you had a single deck in the back that was large, you kind of split it with two stairways, I think on the second proposal, or the second reiteration. Now it looks like potentially that could go back maybe five feet? Is that possible? Or is...
Yeah, I think we have some room to move back a little bit.
Because I think the first one with the deck, where the deck was centered and much larger, and then it had the...
I think on the site plan, we, we put a deck with stairs on either end.
Right, the stairs were a switchback stair.
Right.
Whereas in this proposal, there's stairs going down to the left and to the right as a single straight front stair. So it seems like there's a little bit more space where you could potentially maybe move it back. And then I wanted to just, maybe also just kind of ask Ann, I agree with the sightline distance, however, I was over there today too, taking some pictures, and there's, those bushes are pretty heavy, or high by the mailbox, I can't really see around the corner now, but I know it's trees as opposed to buildings.
I just have, again, a problem with overuse of relatively small piece of property. This wasn't foremade. This is, the initial, the existing building fit the criteria. Now we're adding a second building on a 20,000-square-foot lot, and it's 35 feet high, and it's 20 feet wide, and it's set in front of, to your point, the brewery, so it's jutting out. It does not meet our zoning bylaw of 10 feet. And that's cut and dry, right there. This is Old Country Way, it is not Country Way. So it's...
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that I did, I agree with your sightlines, although the sightlines now are bad because of the bushes and the mailboxes.
And they'll only get worse.
Yeah, exactly. And I was surprised as well, I'll agree with Ann and Bill in the sense of like, I thought to myself, there's no way they could put that building on that lot. It's, it's tight. And I also agree with Ann, as I'm a huge advocate of mixed use, you know, I'd like to potentially see something maybe, but this just seems like it is kind of shoehorned in, for lack of a better word. And I'd be really concerned about trying to maintain that street wall that we're, we've created with the potential brewery, and at least have this be aligned to it in some way if it does go through. That'd be my... So, actually, do you know what that distance is from the proposed structure, the corner of the proposed structure to the sidewalk? At the, at the closest angle, as the sidewalk curves around the corner where the...
There's here.
Exactly. I mean, that looks pretty close.
Well, this is five and a half feet, so this is, this dimension here?
Yeah, right there.
To the sidewalk?
To the sidewalk.
That looks about two feet.
I mean, that looks really, really close.
A lot of the sidewalks on my, on our property too.
Yeah, well...
No, I'm just saying.
That's okay.
Yeah, but that's why it...
And, just as a point of, I guess, a problem here, you were talking about the businesses themselves, there are the two spaces on the existing gravel to the right, but if you do park behind the building, let's say it's a lawyer's office or something, there's no sidewalk, because it stops, right where, I guess you're proposing where the mailbox? So, there's no way to really, you'd have to park there and then kind of walk out on the street around the corner, or cut through the yard or something. There's no way to go from those parking lots to the front entrance without crossing, either walking into the street or crossing over the lawn. Am I correct?
There is a walkway that exists. Walkway now that takes us right to here.
Oh, there is?
Yep.
Okay. So then, potentially, you'd go to that existing gravel drive and then walk around. Okay. So, and I wanted to comment on, with some of the design review comments, just that I thought the dormers, I mean aesthetically, let's just divorce it from the site for the moment, I thought aesthetically it looked good, I like the dormers, and I assume they're going to match what's on the existing building now? And I think the clavels were going to match as well, correct? Or the...
I think they, the side, the two sides and the rear were going to be natural shingles to match. The front, we decided on a clapboard, I think it was a color we had picked out, I don't know, autumn red or something.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw the autumn red comment.
Yeah.
Okay. And so just aesthetically, I thought it looked good, and in fact, I thought it was interesting that we had approved on 50 Country Way, which is down, it's not Old Country Way, but 50 Country Way, the mixed use, the two dormers on that building, so we're kind of setting a nice precedent, but we're continuing that theme, which I think in general was nice, as far as aesthetically speaking. But, with all that being said, I do think it's shoehorning on a small lot. So, that's all my comments. And questions?
I was thinking the same thing terminology-wise, really, really, just stuffing, shoehorning a structure in there, it's... I think Ann, spot-on, it's, it's a little much for that property, I think. That's, everyone's pretty much already covered, I wouldn't say, but I agree with a lot of it.
Did I ask, what dictated that... Did I ask, what dictated that the building go where it is? As opposed to be sort of back or connected to the existing building or extension of that?
There's available room in the front here. This is the commercial building here, there's parking here, and this was an open area, and the size of the building was determined by the available area, and that was in here. That's why it's 26 by 30 feet. What I'm hearing is, I think the main objection I'm hearing is, is that sprint yard setback?
It's more than that. It's way more than that, Mr. Maribito.
In the zoning bylaw, as far as density goes, they allow 16 units of housing in addition to the next year per acre. It's a half acre, you could have eight units of housing here plus commercial use. I believe this arrangement looks much better than having one big building. You could have this one here, sure, you could take this and attach it to here, have your parking out front. Another option would be is, we don't need this space here. We could push this building over here, and we could get the 10-foot setback from here, and you could probably push this over. The reason the sidewalk's here is just the pavement and the street here. You notice here, this is the property line. I know no reason why we, you know, why we couldn't take this sidewalk and come right down here and go up like this. It'd still be on our property. The vehicles come down here now, and they come around this curve, and they go up to the old Fitz Mill, but they're actually driving on private property.
Is that a town sidewalk?
Pardon?
Is that a town sidewalk?
This is a town sidewalk compared to here.
You mean the whole thing? Was it put in by the town?
It was put in by the MTA.
From this point on, it's on private property.
But is it existing now?
Yes.
This is an existing sidewalk here. John put the mailboxes here for this here. He actually built this and brought it up to the mailboxes. So you probably got a couple of feet that's on private property, only because he put them right up against the edge of the property so the mail truck could drive up to it. But again, this is his property here, and he could bring this down and come up like this.
Are you prepared to look at that?
The point I'm making, my building's setback, is if we were to shift this over, pull it up, because this is on an angle, and you know, we have room to pull this up slightly, we could meet the 10-foot setback, pull the building over, and you know, our little parking, the drainage wouldn't change.
So what of your project right now, as I understand it, is to build the rest of that curvature in that sidewalk?
Well, I think...
From the property line in?
This here?
No, the sidewalk.
This here, yes.
Yeah. That's not built now, but that's what you proposed to build.
Yeah, because the mailbox is like right here, right now.
Yeah, but the mailbox is right here.
So they're saying moving it all the way up, but continuing that curve.
Right, they're just saying, if this is a public sidewalk, they could, they could bring it out more.
But if you bring it out more, there's, what about the curve of the street? Where's the, meaning that, doesn't the sidewalk follow the curve of the curve?
This is the edge of pavement, the street.
Right.
The same as, the street is on this property.
So you're potentially proposing that you would change the street?
This does not work.
I don't know why you question.
Okay.
Because one of your questions was about the setback from the corner of the building, the sidewalk?
Right, right.
Of three feet? Well, that's an easy fix, we just bring this down here and come up.
The existing parking sidewalk?
What it would do is to turn this into basically a 90-degree intersection, which is probably better, because right now, the vehicles come down here and come right around and go straight in.
What is, what is the, what is the existing parking before you, before you put anything on this? Where do they park? How much, how much are required according to the current permit?
For this building here? Eight spaces. No, actually, seven. Seven were required, and we had eight. This is the eighth one here. There's seven in front of the building, and there's one down here.
And how is it used now? How much, how much actual activity is there?
Here?
Parking activity, yeah. I mean, do you have more overflow than those seven spaces?
No. He, John has the ability, John has some of his vehicles here, some of them can park in the building, some of them park outside, some of the people take them home at night. He's never had a problem with overflow parking.
So nobody's been around the back where you're proposing to be parking?
No, occasionally they'll park there because the space is available, but there's still space out in front as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I am, if I'm looking at this lot line of yours correctly, and it just sort of comes down and then it curves around, so that your property line is in fact probably three feet, this is your property line here, correct? That's yours?
Yes.
Right here. So your building, in point of fact, is probably about three feet from your property line.
No, five and a half feet.
No, no.
But that's not from there, that's...
This is from here to here is five and a half feet.
No, that's from here to there. It's five and a half. You didn't ever put the five and a half in there, so those are the two in between.
All right, so this is five and a half feet from here to here?
Talking about this five and a half foot dimension right here, from the property line of the building.
From here to there is five, it's still too small. And then this is, no, I can't support this at this moment in time. If you want to redesign it, that is certainly, you know, whatever.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, the property across the street and down Union Street, I'm not sure if it's been sold or there's discussion about it, but there's discussion about putting a good-sized development there, a residential development. So I think you might want to be a little careful...
This is the business of the light district, right?
Yeah, well, my point being, that I think you might want to be a little careful about changing the geometry of that intersection, because if you make it hard for people to turn and to get down there, you may run into some issues if there are a lot of people coming off the rotary and trying to come down to, you know, some kind of large residential development down here.
From here.
Which is, well, actually, over here.
Actually, I'd be, aren't Anderson's old property?
So, I think it is a little bit of a red herring having John owning land that's actually in what's used as a public street, but I don't know how it got that way. It looks like, you know, just evolved over time, and this is the way it is.
Right, so...
Yeah. Yeah, it's his land, but, you know, people are driving over it, so I don't know what he wants to do about that. He hasn't stopped it so far.
Well, I mean, we made accommodations when we came into the, you know, as far as the mailbox area was used there, we paved it and put some shrubs around it to clean it up and try to maintain that area.
Did you pave that?
The mailbox, we put brickwork around it, just so you could walk up to it and put some shrubs around it.
Okay. Let's get, I know you've been waiting patiently, so let's get a comment here.
Thank you for your time.
Could you just restate your name and where you live?
Steven Martero, I live on Nine Jenkins Place.
Thank you.
I'm third generation in that neighborhood. And I agree with Mr. Burline, Mr. Lynn, this is way too tight, and if you, if you don't mind, may I...
Please.
I really don't understand all the greenery. But I don't know, right back here, you've got nothing but storage, storage bins, I don't know who guys own that. It's all storage back here. I don't see where the greenery is. I've never been back here, I don't walk on people's property. You stated that you have a couple of spaces here, which you do, but you also failed to mention that you have apartment in back of this. One that I know of looks like two, when you're driving by.
No, there are two, you kind of stated that.
There's two parking, and there's always two cars here.
Two apartments.
And this gravel area right here. This is well-maintained here, you've got one little spot of green grass there, and it's dangerous now, it's dangerous now with all the trucks and all the activity at the old Fitz's Mill, and all the activity that you have here. I drove by there tonight, coming home from work, and again, these spaces, the spaces back here, it's even during the day when people are working on the trucks and, they're all, they're all taken up. I mean, if you have, if you have a office space here, I think there's maybe one or two cars, maybe two people working there? So you've got two cars, and then you're gonna have two apartments upstairs, that's two, maybe three cars. Where is it? And over here?
So I'm sorry, could you just, because this was a question I asked earlier.
Okay.
So you're saying that the general parking on the lot takes up the space where the building's going?
No, it takes, right here, you're saying you have ample parking spaces. I've never seen, I've never seen, there's always trucks there, pickup trucks, and dump trucks and everything else for the businesses that are working out of there. Okay? I don't know where people are gonna park. This is a dangerous area, as it is already. My mailbox is there, and it's dangerous where it is stated right now. You move it there, people never stop at the stop sign. And you've got trucks running through here, you have people coming here, a lot of people like myself, we stop here and pick up our mail. All right? And it's a dangerous intersection. My children are, my boys are grown, but you've got a lot of kids riding bikes and everything else there. It seems like, where does it start? Where does it start? Every square footage is being taken up here. It's, it's, it's like a scam. I can't believe, the building is pleasingly nice looking. I meant that, but right here, I mean, where does it stop? There's no greenery there. This is the only greenery you have with, and back to the mailbox. I mean, and you're restricting people's access around driving on that road. It's a danger. And I don't see where the parking spaces, there's always two parking spaces here, two cars there, or two trucks. And like I said, you have one, I know of, maybe two apartments on top of this structure right here. Two more over there? I mean, where does it start? This is my neighborhood, I own property here. Like I said, a third generation here. I mean, you already have a brewery going up there. I mean, I live there, okay? And, you know, you wouldn't, this one starts to be there. It's crazy, I wish I was there at the time, because this, this thing is ridiculous, but so be it. You want to just take a little piece of, piece of greenery that we have there and put a structure on it? It doesn't make sense. I mean, and the walkway through here, I drove around, I didn't walk on your property, but I drove around pretty slowly around it. I don't see any access from these parking spaces over here to the back of the building.
It's, you probably can't see us down there at the end, but there is...
Probably, I'm not gonna get out and walk around on your property. But it's, you know, how much is enough? How much is enough? I mean, granted, you know, Devlin's in your neighborhood. You know, would you accept that?
I, I work there every day, so I get my mail there, I walk there, so...
Well, you know what it's like.
Yeah.
It's dangerous already. It's too congested already. You took a small neighborhood community, and now, you know, I get up at 5:00 in the morning to go to work, so it's not, you know, I hear the trucks and everything else from Fitz's Mill, all the trucks here in the, in the morning. And it's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of traffic, and you're proposing this, this office space with two more apartments, and we got the brewery next door? You know, where does it stop? I mean, it's like you're building every square foot that you have available. And, and like I said, I didn't walk around your property. I don't see this greenery. Everything I see here is asphalt, not even concrete, everything's asphalt.
Yeah, all the green is in the backyard, fenced in, but it's in the backyard.
You know, I don't see how you could possibly...
It's all paved.
No, all the green area that he has is all grass, it gets cut, you know.
And then this is more of a question, isn't the front, I thought it was gravel, I could be wrong, is it not gravel? Like all in the front there where the, where the seven designated spaces are? Is that paved or is that gravel? It's paved?
It's paved. Around back where he's got green indicated on the plan.
Everything, everything's gray and displayed as gray. Let's see, um...
Thank you.
The footprint of existing structure.
Okay.
Do you have a size on that, first of all?
Have we gotten your input?
We've talked all night.
Bob, just trying to keep it to one conversation at a time, so I just want to make sure you get your...
Mind if I jump in maybe a little bit later?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. It's too small, the space.
Go ahead, Reggie.
I was just, just curious, what the footprint of that existing structure is, how big is it?
Forty by eighty.
What's the use, John? Who's in there? You got movers?
Devlin's in a couple bays, and I'm in the other bay. And then the apartment's upstairs.
I've seen other trucks there besides Devlin.
You know, if other people drive to work, they work for him in their trucks, yeah.
Well, they have names on them.
Yeah, I mean, people might, it's a place of business, so they might come.
It is very busy. Very, very busy.
And the traffic isn't, isn't your cars?
Right, it's trucks.
It's trucks.
Lots of trucks. And Devlin comes in with his truck loaded often with shingles, and he parks in that long concrete curb with his truck and his shingles until such time as he can get rid of them. I've seen them there. So, again, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's too small, and it's too much for such a space, regardless of your property line.
So, thank you. I've got a couple other questions.
Sorry.
In terms of the open space, what is the open space in requirement or commitment in the current permit? And how does that change with this?
You're required to have, there's more to...
What's the, what's the current permit open space? Before you change anything?
Well, the current, the current, okay, the current open space would be everything which isn't pavement. If you look at sheet two or four, note seven, the existing impervious area is 50% of the lot. So that means you have 50% open space on this lot right now.
I haven't seen it. What's that?
And was any of that committed to remain open space as part of the initial permit?
Well, the open space applies to the lot, the 40,000 square foot lot. Right now, 50%...
No, I'm talking about the existing permit for the commercial space. Was there a commitment? Let me just finish. Was there a commitment of a certain minimum amount of open space that would be maintained?
Open space wasn't required when you did the building. The reason is because there's a business system. I'm just saying, see, when we did this, this is in the business system, there was a requirement for the open space. The open space came when you did the building, over the system.
I'm not asking whether there was a requirement, I'm asking whether there was a commitment. You could have voluntarily identified you would save a certain amount of open space. So what you're telling me is no. So what you're telling me is no.
I'd, I'd have believed.
In the, in the existing permit.
The existing permit?
Yeah.
I don't know what the existing space is. I don't know if it's considered a deal at all.
Karen, let's get.
I haven't seen it. Okay. So what is the open space once you put this new building in and whatever paving, et cetera, that's going in with it? What's the open space now?
It's forty-five point four percent.
The open space is dropping by five percent through the addition of a, of the building, you're talking? I'm not buying that.
It's, it's this building here. It's the impervious area on the site.
No, you're, you're creating parking spaces too. I'm not counting those.
This is all paved.
Okay, so that's not open space then?
No.
Why do you have fifty percent?
It's right here. You see the gray area?
Okay.
The sand right there.
Yeah, I see it.
This one.
Yep, so you're creating a building, two parking spaces to the right of that building, you're telling me that's five percent?
These are here. Your spaces are here now. You can actually take that back to one if you want.
Okay, so the building itself is only five percent of the total open space?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd love to see the calculations on that one.
It's the, well, it's simple.
Put your, put your other map down, if you wouldn't mind? No, the one you've got. See the green space here.
This is the impervious area, right now it's ten thousand one hundred and seventy.
No, I'm talking about open space, not impervious area.
Well, right now?
Right now.
It's fifty percent.
Right, and you say you're going down to forty-five percent when you build this out?
That's correct.
How? I'd be interested in seeing those numbers, that sounds like, doesn't sound like you're taking up enough?
Just, just follow me, Steve. This building is forty-six by forty. Let's say for a proper description, to make it simple, it's twenty-five by forty, it's a thousand square feet. You take five percent of twenty thousand, what is that?
Is that how much open space you have?
No, 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 just ask the question, five.
I'm asking you, how much open space do you have right now?
Five, five percent of twenty thousand.
Is that how much you have?
It's a thousand.
You have twenty thousand square feet of open space right now?
Just, just, just follow what I'm saying. The, the open space has been reduced by five percent. Agree with that?
No, no, I don't agree with that.
The total property, but that's including the structures.
Well, you explain the numbers. This is how we came up with it. If you take five, five percent of twenty thousand, it's actually twenty thousand.
What's twenty thousand? Where did twenty thousand come from?
That's the total lot size?
The total lot.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you that, I'm asking what you're changing the open space from, based on what it is today and when you build this out?
It's about a thousand, a thousand foot less.
Square feet.
The size of the building.
Right, so that's at least ten percent of the, of the current open space.
Steve, just, just, this is what I want to say.
And I want to know the size of your lot, I want to know how much open space you have right now.
The open space is based upon the water area.
No, it's based on what you have open space there.
It's based upon a percentage of the, of the water. What I'm saying is, is that the green area, on, on this plan here, it's everything that's pervious on the lot. Anything that's impervious can't be calculated.
I understand that. So how many, how many square feet is that?
So what I'm saying is ten thousand one hundred and seventy square feet.
And that's the green.
Take a thousand, the open space.
Which is half of that.
Okay, I got my answer. Took, took a long time to get there, but I got my answer. So it's really, you're reducing the current open space by ten percent? No?
Well, the overall open space by five, the current ten percent.
Currently, the open space on the lot is ten thousand square feet, and you're taking a thousand square feet of that.
Correct.
In my book, that's ten percent. Okay. I'm not trying to make an argument here, I'm just trying to get the answer.
That's where I go, I get, I get ten percent. If half of it is open space now, and it's twenty thousand, that's ten thousand would be available, and out of the ten thousand, one thousand is a building.
Right.
Which is ten percent.
And, and the, the parking spaces that are to the right, is that paved or asphalt or is that gravel?
Whatever.
So is that considered impervious then right now? Or how does that go into the calculations? Like, right now, I guess I'm trying to figure out, everything that's colored green there, you said that is the open space, which is also.
It's pervious.
Impervious.
Impervious.
Impervious, okay.
Like long area?
Right. But.
That's ten thousand square feet.
But at the same time, wouldn't the, that gravel also be pervious? Not really?
I don't think we counted as open space.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, like, where his calculations are coming from, that's all. Okay.
You know, it's open space, it's not pervious space.
Right. So, I had just a question or a, maybe to the board and to you, what if you removed that existing gravel drive and brought the structure up to the, the lot line that allowable, which would be, I'm not sure what the setback is from that lot line.
H feet?
Maybe, let's say ten.
Well, I mean, that's a setback.
Well, I'm saying, if, take the proposed structure, and on this plan, move it to the right as far as possible, based on the zoning requirements. So that, then it's, and then come back, then you could move it back five or ten feet, so it'd end up being basically right here.
Oh, I'm sad.
Right?
So you're talking about this?
Exactly. If you did that, then.
That would be a big spot.
It would be, as Bill, I think, said, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, he was like, well, I could kind of potentially support this if it was along a straight run. At that point, the structure would be along the straight part of the road as much as possible.
Richard, just remember you've got parking lot on the immediate other side of that property line.
Yeah, well, there's a fence there, though.
And to say that it's a hundred and forty-seven setback, uh-uh.
There's two apartments here. There's two apartments here. And this, and they've got stairway, wooden stairway, a couple of levels going up, and it's, to me, it looks like it's far, it's far out, far more out than it is on this drawing. And the parking space is here, I assume, for the two apartments that are already here above this structure.
You know what, excuse me, Steve?
Yes.
Looking at the draft Planning Board Administrative Site Plan Review, six Old Country Way, not four, six.
Yeah, that's the brewery, right?
No, it is not. That's his big building. That's his building.
He was on four union.
Well, at one point, six Old Country Way.
Right.
Was a forty.
Oh, six Old Country Way.
Yes.
Forty thousand square feet.
Well.
It's six.
That's where he developed it.
Right.
Isn't, isn't, what's the brewery then?
The brewery is on the next lot.
Well, it was formerly six Old Country Way.
Right, and it got divided. However, you know, in terms of, two, the use shall be restricted to a carpentry shop as proposed by the applicant, and we all know, is it? And you've got stuff outside that shouldn't be there, shingles, that type of thing. So, I don't know.
There's too small of a space there. I don't, I don't see the open space. I mean, that area right behind the mailboxes, you guys maintain that very well. It's, it's not, it's a post, postage stamp.
To answer Richard's question in response to mine, to move that twelve feet is not going to, in my mind, going to make a difference.
Okay.
This is a balloon, if I move it one way, I'm going to pop it out of somewhere else. And I've only got so much area there, and I can slide it around, and I may solve some frontage, front setbacks, but I'm going to create another problem.
Right.
What is the, what is the planned use for the first floor?
No business.
Does it retail?
Uh, probably not, I mean, in this area of town, not too much retail is, kind of exists, so I don't think we're going to get, the square footage isn't there for.
I think that's what the mixed use.
Retail, it's mixed, either retail or business.
Supposed to be.
But it's, it's small, so it's going to be.
So it's not retail at all?
Retail and business for the downstairs.
Like a lawyer's office or something, or?
Right, I think it's supposed to be at least fifty percent retail.
We'll see any retail in that area.
So, that's, that's what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is what's.
Unless you show maps. People get done or get lost.
Give directions on how to get there from here.
So what would the retail component be?
We're not sure yet, to make it available and see what comes in.
I think the requirement is that more than fifty percent of the net floor area, right, on the first floor should be occupied by retail spaces, right?
Yep.
Actually, it's only on certain streets, and this isn't one of those streets.
Well, that's.
It's on Country Way, um, Country Way and the Drift Way look like the streets where that would apply.
Is that right?
Yeah.
It's right here, Steve. Okay. It's five six oh point four.
I was going to ask a question on a related topic. This property is all in the Water Resource Protection District. No, I'm asking.
Well.
It says that on your plan, it says that on the previous plan, so none of it's in, is any of it in the zone A?
I don't believe it's in.
Because I mean, in general.
Do we know that, or is we just guessing?
I don't believe it's in.
Thought that line was a little farther in the, in a section of the street, but.
Okay.
You know, there's, I'd just like to point out a couple things. Number one, the open space requirement is only twenty percent in this district. This property is also in the business district. You built the original structure, the construction building, and the apartments above it are allowed, as a matter of right, in the business district. They're also allowed in the village overlay district. The point I, I want to make is that everything he's doing here is in the allowed use of this particular district. Again, the open space is only twenty percent. And you're reading, you know, and it's obviously smaller than most other areas, because it's zoning by law, and it was being read, and the purpose was to encourage people to come to this area. It's still in the business district, and it's also in the village overlay district, so the two of them lining together. What you're seeing here is, you've got a use that came in under the business district, the proposed building coming in under the village overlay district. The density in this district is larger than you see in probably any other district in the town situation. The zoning by law, as you prepared, the board prepared, approved by town meeting, allowed a higher density of use in the residential area. So what he's doing, in my opinion, is not out of character to, to keep in what is zoning by law does. You can certainly move that building to meet the ten-foot setback. You can, as, as I mentioned earlier, you can move it over to the right, push it up, you get the ten-foot setback, and you can reduce that parking and pick up the other space on the left side of the building somewhere. Laura mentioned a large project on where the Fitzville property was, I think it's the Anderson property now, that's, that's in the middle of the arm that I'm cleaning up. If that comes to fruition, and this area gets more traffic, to me, it would make sense to make this one-way, in and out, Country Way down here. You're not allowing vehicles to come in and come this way, or go out.
It's up to traffic rules.
Excuse me, there's, there's a friend of mine that lives right across the street, how can you possibly?
I just made the point, we're driving, we're trying to.
On the twenty thousand square foot, with that.
Vehicles coming down here, you mentioned a large project, and I might go on in that here. If a vehicle's here, if a vehicle's coming down, coming this way, I think if this is a dangerous intersection, we're driving, we're trying to do, it makes sense to make this one-way, one-way, one-way. So they just, the, 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 but not, not.
Well, that assumes that wherever they're coming out is okay too, so I mean, you know, so I'm getting the traffic design here for that. Has there been a traffic study at all, or evaluation?
No. We, we work for something, specifically a house, we work to rent for that.
The corner is dangerous enough with the bushes there, although it pleasingly looks good. But putting a building there, it's going to really restrict public access as well as increase the traffic, and it's going to, I can't stress this enough, the danger of that corner. It's already dangerous now, the way it is. You can't see coming around the corner. Those trucks wheel right out of there, in and out of there, without stopping at stop signs. God knows if they hit a kid or something, and this, this, you can't see coming around that corner as it is now, never mind having a structure there.
Any other questions at this point? All right.
Do you have any question for?
I hear a lot of, uh, sort of assessments on this that indicate that there may not be a way to fix this, so I guess I'm looking to the board to see if you have any thoughts here.
I would deny it.
I guess in my opinion, moving the building around is not going to solve all of the inherent problems with that location.
Yeah, that's what I asked.
I would, I would have to say that, you know, the objective of the business district and the village overlay district was to create density here, so I don't, I don't disagree with Mr. Mayor Beto about that, that we were trying to accomplish here. In fact, we're going to have a pretty interesting little business going there right next to him. So from that perspective, I think this is really what we set up, is to have some density there. The question is, you know, it really becomes sort of the devils of the details here in terms of how that's done, at the same time providing for safe access and all the other elements that we look at from a site review point of view.
The density at all, boss, it was, they came back and we were looking for the presentation of retail in conjunction with business to sit there and support the increased density.
Even if it was retail, where are people going to park? Where? I don't understand that, I don't see it.
The, the whole pedestrian routing on the site doesn't make sense. It barely made sense when they put in the, put in the original building.
Well, is it, is it fair to say, as we stand today, the structure itself is not the issue? Are you guys comfortable with that? The look of the building?
I'm comfortable with the look of the building, I'm not.
Well, I just, one thing, you know, it's.
We've gotten enough feedback from the Design Review Committee that people will sort of look and feel of it. It feels like it's more about a sort of a location and amassing than how does it, once you put it in, how does it integrate with the rest of the function of not only your lot, but also the surrounding area?
Yeah, it would be possible to shift the building on site and have you guys look at it that way, to address some of the issues? I mean, we, we, we came here with some direction and, you know, we're told to use a closer frontage there, so we did it, you know, we, we went to the Design Review, blah, blah, we did that. You know, so, you know, they made some suggestions, the site plan and stuff like too, so we didn't get this point, to this point, just kind of making it up on our own. We had, you know, we had some input from people around here, so we'd like to certainly get your input. And if there's something that we could do to, to, to make this work.
The idea behind sort of, the frontage, right, is that we don't end up, the car's parked in front of the building, you know, that it provides a blocking access to the buildings. So you have that, maybe it's, maybe it's almost a little too close, at least, I think, I think we're hearing that from some of the members here, that maybe it needs to be back, set back a little bit more. You know, but I still think, you know, that sort of, having it relatively close to the street is still an objective of the, of the business, you know, of the business district and the village overlay district.
Would it be fair to say matching the building next door to it would be something?
That's something that I would look for, to try to create that, that street wall. I know we've tried to do that in other situations as well, where it's, it's matching, like, I think on Ford Place, we looked at that as well, like moving some of the buildings forward to do that. So, I mean, I may be in a disagreement with some of the other board members, but I feel like as long as you meet the zoning requirements. but I feel like as long as you meet the zoning requirements, I would be more supportive, in my particular opinion, if the structure was moved to the right and potentially moved back a bit. You know, I do think it's still a very, it's, you know, again, you're shoehorning it on that site, but if it is allowed by zoning, I kind of feel like, well, that's ours to fix to some degree. You know, it's like, by right, to some, you know, they, you should have the right to develop your property based on the zoning requirements, as long as the safety...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to interject, because I think there's a lot of confusion about what "by right" means. And this is not allowed by right. This requires a supermajority vote of the planning board, which is a discretionary vote. So if you see something that looks just great, and you like it, and you're really sure that you like it, and not just that you like it, but that it really meets the intent of the bylaw, as well as the detailed standards, and you want to vote for it, you know, that's certainly your right to do so. But if you don't see it that way, you know, you have the right not to approve something.
Right, that's very helpful.
60-square-foot building, shift it to where? Without getting on your property and taking measurements of that, where? You don't have the room there.
You're only going to be able to shift the detry to the right.
I mean, is anybody...
From the right-hand side. Yeah, I was by there this morning.
I also wanted to mention that the way the site developed is not in agreement with the plan that was approved. The parking that's on the northwest kind of side of the building, that's bottom side towards Old Countryway, that whole parking area was never part of the original plan. And in general, what you're trying to do in this Water Resource Protection District is to have more recharge, more pervious surface. And I don't remember how that parking area came to be, but I don't think there was ever any discussion with any boards about it. And none of that's shown on your plan.
I think we discussed it at the MEAC, but going back a number of years now, but I think that was the intent from the beginning, but...
Well, when you look on the plan, it just shows, you know, driveways going up to the building. I mean, we have the plans right here, I'll show you.
As I say, it's been eight or 10 years, so I care.
Yeah, but somehow it kind of morphed into a much larger parking area. And if that parking area wasn't there, then I think you might have room to, you know, maybe, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the board, but at least you have some more room to play with. But the parking area is there now, so...
Well, it seems like it's, one, a density issue, one, the other thing, a safety issue coming around the corner and stuff. If we can take a look, address some of those issues, and come back, and show maybe a little different layout that might satisfy some of the input that we got tonight, you guys would be willing to look at that?
Can I ask you a question on that, also? And I know it probably has an economic impact, but is there a reason, was there a thought to building essentially sort of a single-story cape-like structure just for the commercial area at the bottom? I mean, that would change sort of the massing on the lot a little bit.
You mean, build a single story?
Yeah.
Well, then, I think it would, the apartments are probably more valuable than the building below, if you want to...
That's, I think, the apartments are the most valuable part of what you're adding.
Now, question, is there a reason why that parking area that's immediately to the, I guess that's north?
To the right of the...
Well, no, not to the right, behind the proposed structure. The area that exists now, is there a reason that needs to be so big?
I just existed, we, at the time, paved it just for, we have a dumpster back there.
This whole area right here, it's all paved. Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to get at, is, is there a reason why, based on traffic, or, not traffic, but being able to back up and move around, it seems like that's extra space right there that could potentially, this could be moved back.
You need that space for the people to work, and for the trucks to...
They know we're on in that area. That's, it's like, to me, that's needed. We've got the dumpster back there, too.
Oh, yeah, I see the dumpster pad.
Yeah, they back up for that.
This is completely different, then, huh?
But so is the use.
It was intensified.
The use is different. How is the use different?
Oh, it was supposed to be a carpentry shop, and now, no, it's... We've got a roofer in there.
And a painter?
No, there's no painting. Painter is a tenant in the apartments. But his truck's there, but he's not a spray booth painter type thing.
Like I said, from my perspective, one of the things I'd like to do is to look at this plan and what was approved compared to what's being asked for. We haven't seen the original, at least I haven't seen it, though. Maybe you sent it out, I just didn't read it or something, but I'd like to see what that looks like compared to what we're proposing to go through, because it's the same lot, right? So we're changing sort of the buildings and the usage of the lot to some degree here. I would just like to understand where we're coming from. But I do think it would be worthwhile if you could take a look at it and identify whether there's ways, particularly, it seems to me, moving it back is, you know, making it feel like, you know, a component of the existing building or something might be a better fit, might have a better fit. Just a thought, but...
Excuse me, but any of you like this in your neighborhood? I mean, I know it's his property, but crying out loud, it's so congested on that piece of land that he owns now.
It's, I mean, it's going to be less density than the proposed next door. You know, I'd be, the same, if we were to have the same density as next door, you know, we have more open space, but...
It's got quite a bit of open space there around that building as well.
It's all paved.
It just looked like, you know...
Okay, we get that, and figure out what we're going to do here next.
Right.
We have a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, at 8:15.
I guess we missed that.
Well, I want to make...
I think we should probably carry this one forward for the next meeting, but let's figure out sort of the plan and the back here.
And just a quick comment, I know we've been somewhat negative, which is justifiably so, but I also want to just comment to the proponent that, you know, the fact of having housing that is affordable housing in Situate is something that, I'm assuming it's going to be affordable, because it's smaller, it's only one bedroom, that's something that is also very positive. I just wanted to make that comment, that having different types of housing available is excellent. And I think more potential retail or commercial, as Ann said at the very beginning, is something that we're trying to do more here at the board. So that's commendable, it's just maybe the wrong site for it. So, I don't want you to go away thinking we're all negative, that's not, there's some positives here. We're trying to see the silver lining.
Yeah, there's a pony in there somewhere.
There's a unicorn.
I think you've got two choices. One is to come back up and take action on it now, or come back up and allow the applicant to come back up and make changes. I mean, those are the two choices that we've got, both of which are under control of the applicant.
Yeah, it's...
Well, if you guys would be willing to let us come back with some modifications and changes that you might accept...
But we'll need you to ask for extension to do that, so...
Yes, if you're willing to do that, but I just want to, if that's going to be received, I'd be happy to.
Excuse me, what modifications, like, what modifications would make this correct with the void?
I don't know yet. All right.
We don't have the square footage here.
Okay, we've heard it, we've heard it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think the proponent should have the opportunity, if he would like to try to take the input we've given you today and come up with some additional approaches. I for one would be willing to listen to it, okay?
Will I be notified?
Yeah.
Well, you'll know what is.
You'll know right now, when they load on the time.
Yeah, we'll schedule it now for follow-up, so...
I have a motion.
Good.
I move to accept. Yes, no? Do you want to...
I think I already heard you say...
You want a continuance, is that correct?
Please.
Okay. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for, excuse me, for Union Street Mixed Use Special Permit until December 22nd, 2016, at 7:30 PM.
Is it 22nd?
December.
Second.
Does that give you enough time?
Later than that, if that's not enough time. Is that enough time, or you want more time?
What would we come back with, is like, you know, we wouldn't have the drainage chemistry done, but we'd come in with a new layout, still the parking?
I would suggest you do that before you spend a lot of time on other things. Because I think we're at fundamental issues here, as opposed to, you should make sure you can deal with the drainage for things you propose, but...
Issues, and see if you like the, you know, the change in the layout, the building, the parking, and then we'll go from there.
I think that's the plan. So it's been moved and seconded, as others have favored?
Aye.
Thank you. Twenty seconds.
But also come back with what the existing conditions are, so that we know exactly what's not out there on the ground now.
Yeah, I would, you know, adding to what you do, a traffic pattern, usage pattern of the current commercial space, because it seems to be different than what was approved. It seems to be different from, you know, sort of your description of it, as opposed to, you know, a local butter. So it would be good to understand the flow of traffic and parking on the site.
Yeah, and I think, and I'm sorry, this gentleman, what was your name again?
Steve Montara.
Steve. So Steve pointed out about, like, where would they park? I think that's a key issue, like, if, let's just assume these are lawyer's office, or, I don't know, a dentist or a doctor, whatever, that there's going to be people coming and parking. And I think right now that you haven't addressed where they potentially, easily, would park and then walk to the business. I'd like to think they'd walk from the train, but I know that's not properly...
I have a visitor that does that, now. He works at Blossom.
That is, that was one of the objectives of the village overlay district.
His car sits there all week, and he just wants to train. Goes to GE, goes to work.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight. I apologize to our next group here for being so late. Public hearing, accessory dwell, accessory first, I am on Rock Beach.
It's something. On the beach.
Okay. Are they here? Oh, just Paul.
Just Paul.
Then you have to apologize to me.
For what?
For being late. We're sorry for the lateness.
I was thinking, the owners are going to be...
Oh, look at you, you're going to take pictures?
Take a picture.
I like the last one, I love this one.
This one's like, even a good structure.
This one's even better.
Okay.
The one in white.
The guy before you messed it all up. You're up.
The applicant on the existing line over 91 Rock Beach. The property line is outlying in yellow. There's a seawall in front of the house on the ocean side. This is the proposed dwelling. That's in the process of being under construction. The existing dwelling has been demolished. The files have been driven.
So the building permit's been issued for this?
Pardon?
A building permit's been issued for this?
I know we have the demolition...
I think just the foundation permit, because we don't have a system yet.
That's why I see the pile, so that's why the pile is under red.
We've been to the building board for the layout of the proposed house. We have an order of conditions for the house and the subject system. The existing house had to be torn down before we could do the per test. We did the per test, we designed the subject system, and there will be a hearing for a variance for the side yard setback, the leaching area, to sign on.
For what? I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, the subject system leaching area is less than 10 feet from that property line. The report of health will prove that. We just have to have a public hearing. Only a letter here about the Situate, they're going to make the piece of land there. This application is for an accessory dwelling, which would be up over the garage. I've submitted the architectural plans. Sheesh, I have submitted an easy follow-up for the architect, rock designer. And the subject show is, there's two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling, which is the same as the garage. The owner has, he's going to cross the street for parking. It's, this even goes with this property, it's quite old. And I just showed, there's four spaces here for the house, for the occupants of the main house, and the accessory dwelling parking will be inside the garage. So the stairs can walk there apartment from the, you can just walk from the garage.
So the accessory dwelling is where?
Above the garage, above the...
Paul, can you point out where the accessory dwelling is?
There's a jog in the building here.
Yeah.
The accessory dwelling is from here back.
It is here.
Why does it have bedroom, oh, you're saying, calling it bedroom number four, but it's not?
It's a one-bedroom, right?
It's this piece right here, if you happen to see.
Yeah. You see a solid wall here between the accessory dwelling and the main house? That's what they, they think so, from one end to the other.
And it's, is it a single story, or is it multiple stories?
Well, this is the garage floor, this area here.
I know there's a garage floor, but is it just a single story above the garage? Or is there something above there? There's a stairwell in it.
There's a log bridge, the log bridge, the building, it's just one.
There would be room here for...
There's a, up here is the washing dryer. Somewhere below, totally room, like a washing dryer area, so you can walk in from the main house.
That's the main house.
Right, so how do you get to the main house versus the accessory dwelling? Is it this way? No?
This is the main entrance to the mudroom.
So whose cars are these?
It's through the garage, isn't it?
You see the stairs going up?
Who, does one go to the main, and one go to the... Who, are, does one go to the main and one go to the accessory?
No, these are both the accessory. Then there's a set of stairs going up to accessory. The accessory goes from here to here above.
Where does this person park?
So the main house doesn't have a garage, basically.
The occupants of the main house.
The occupants of the main house don't have technically a parking space. Are you, an inside parking space?
How big was the original house that you ripped down?
Twelve hundred square feet out of this place.
There's just the one stairway.
But the footprint was basically the same.
The original house?
Yes.
Oh, no. Not at all, no.
Summer house, there's no summer house.
I know.
Yeah, I know, I know it is.
Are you, um, are you done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Um, I know we've got some questions that are starting to percolate here already, but I'll, uh, I'll ask Laura first for her overview.
Okay. Bill was just asking about whether this was similar to the footprint of the existing house, and I, let's see, 28 plus 15, I'm just trying to calculate that. It was 43 by 31, and that included a sizable deck. The actual house looks like it was basically 20 by 28 and then with a small, um, like a one-story, uh, little attachment that was 7 by 12. So it was a pretty small house.
About 1,300 square feet total?
Yeah, the total with the two stories was 12, about 1,250 square feet. Whereas this house is about 3,500 square feet, so it's, it's quite a sizable increase. We did get a number of comments on this one as well, and I think, um, you know, the comments are all sort of leading in the same general direction. So the Board of Health indicated that they can't approve a septic system without a public hearing because variances are being requested for the septic system. You can't fit a septic system on this property without variances. We were told that one reason why construction hadn't progressed was that the applicant wanted to wait until the foundation was in to finish designing the septic system. And the reason being that it's got to be sort of custom-designed around the pilings. The fire chief, uh, wrote a fairly, um, strongly worded email about the difficulty of providing fire protection in this type of location. It's similar to a location where some houses burned recently because of the wind and the, um, you know, there's also difficulty getting fire equipment in there. A sprinkler system would be required. That wouldn't be extremely expensive. It probably would be between $5,000 and $10,000 because the, the costs of these systems are, um, are going down as they become more, um, you know, more popular. And of course, you know, the water service would, um, you know, probably have to be upgraded. The parking seemed, um, to me to be a bit problematic in that for the accessory dwelling, the parking has to be located on the same lot as the accessory dwelling. The only parking that can really be identified on that lot is in the garage. The space outside the garage is only 16 feet deep and, you know, unless your car is like touching the garage and, you know, maybe you have a few inches hang out into the, um, you know, into the passageway, you really can't fit a standard car there. So the parking would have to go on the other lot. Now, it all sounds good on paper when you, you look at it, um, you know, you give kind of a cursory look to it, that yes, there are four parking spaces, there's some kind of agreement, it's in the deed. But the parking spaces depend on the person at number 91 paying 2/7 of the tax bill for the other property. Something comes up and maybe they can't make that payment, it says very explicitly that they lose the right to that parking. So the parking is, it's a little, um, vulnerable to, you know, these, you know, different things that, you know, nobody can control except, you know, the owner of the house. So there's, there's, I think, an issue there with the parking. The side setback was approved by the zoning board of appeals, but it is, I believe it's 3.8 feet off the side setback. Um, and then part of it is a little bit larger, I think it's about 4.5, but it's a very narrow, narrow setback. There was a narrow setback there before, but the house was much smaller, and now the house is, you know, it's a much longer stretch with that very, very narrow setback. So I think where all these different threads are going is that this is a really difficult lot to fit an accessory dwelling onto. It's, it's a good-sized house for the lot. There's a portion of the lot that's on the C-word side of the seawall that, you know, I don't know how you, you know, what, what value that part of the lot really has. I think it's about 800 square feet is on that side. So the, the lot is basically, I believe it came to 5,200 square feet. So it seemed like a tremendous, um, effort to squeeze in that accessory dwelling, you know, onto this property.
What's the percentage currently of the accessory dwelling compared to the main dwelling? Do you have that?
Um, yeah, I believe it...
That all was part, or, under regulations?
Um, okay, I took that out. It's, it's well within the 40%.
Okay.
Based on the original size of the house?
Based on the, this house, the house that's proposed. So with the 3,500, um, 962 is the accessory dwelling, so you've got about, you know, approximately 2,500 left, so it's, you know, it's, um, within the 40%.
Okay, and, um, what's the, uh, how do we get in and out of this place?
With great difficulty. Um, I guess you come down Postscript Lane and then...
No, how does the tenant get out?
Oh, um, I believe there's only one entrance, and is that, um, I believe it's through the garage. Yeah, I should, yeah. There are two. I'll let you explain where they are.
Where are they?
No, so one.
Up here, there's a set of stairs going up and then aside.
Oh, but no, but we're talking about to the accessory dwelling.
To the accessory dwelling.
The accessory dwelling is, uh, I think there's a double...
Yeah, that, I mean, that's true, right? There has to be two means of egress for the accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I only see one, other than the, a window.
Right. I don't think that counts.
There's, there's one through the garage, which is for the accessory dwelling.
Right.
Those stairs go up to the, and then...
Right.
How else can you get out of the accessory dwelling except that stairwell?
You can't.
I don't see anything else on the plans that would indicate any outside deck or anything.
I don't see a west lane. I don't know what about the building permit, the building permit plan, but you clearly have to have two ways out.
Yep.
Yeah, well, they probably looked at it as a house, not as an accessory dwelling, right?
Right.
No, no, the...
If it's not approved, it's just as an accessory dwelling.
The plans, the architect threw up, did you have the accessory dwelling in it? The wall between the two minutes.
Right, but you can't get a building permit for it unless you get a permit for the accessory dwelling, right?
Yeah, you shouldn't be able to.
Do you think there's only a permit for this structure?
Can't occupy it as an accessory dwelling.
That's correct.
Correct.
The purpose of this hearing is to get the accessory dwelling, um...
No, I understand.
Approved, okay? The house is already approved by the appeal. It's less non-conforming than the old house was. The reason we want you there was because you have a non-conforming lot, you have a non-conforming structure, non-conforming...
How is it less?
Along, along the, the existing length of the old house, which was about, what, 20 feet? Um, the actual house was, I believe it was about, was it 28 feet? It was actually a couple of inches closer, but now the, the length of the house is, is much, much longer than that. What is it now?
The length of the house is...
Right, really, really, yeah, okay.
Anyway, uh, it doesn't look like there's two means of egress.
Right, I guess Paul is correct, though. I mean, we're really only looking at the accessory dwelling, and so therefore it doesn't have two means of egress. It's kind of an on-starter.
Right.
Have you restored a couple of comments that were made earlier? Septic system design, you couldn't do perk test until the house was torn down because the decks and the porches could roll the way out to here, if you cut this whole area. The system is supposed to be 50 feet back from the seawall, so we couldn't put it here. The only place we could put it was underneath the house, which is where all the systems are on the area beach when they go up on piles. Based upon the pile design, the, one of the trenches is less than 10 feet. I think it's six and a half feet off the property line. This is an upgrade. This isn't a brand-new septic system. It's an upgrade to replace the old system that was there. It's, that's different than a brand-new system. This is the only variance that we need, and they're entitled to that variance if it's an upgrade, but you have to have a public hearing. And the only letter being notified, and this is for the direction of Board of Health, the agent wished to notify the town's situation.
Yeah, we're not, we're not here to talk about the house, right? All we're here to talk about is the accessory dwelling.
The comments remain still on the septic system.
Yeah, the accessory dwelling has to have, has to have sewage of some kind.
The design of the house. The other thing is that the fire chief, I'm sorry, um, um, the fire department's comments did not require this house to be sprinkled. They were recommending, and he stated their reasons for it. If you read the letter, they said that they recommend...
So you're saying that you're not intending to sprinkle it?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying, we just got these comments today. If you read his letter, he recommended that this be sprinkled. And the reason he's saying that is because they don't feel they can fight it from the ocean. This is an open passageway. This is a vacant lot. They can fight a fire from here to here. There's a house here where the deck it comes out to about here. I think this is the area he's talking about to the south. No, I, I can't imagine, I'm, I'm not a firefighter, but I can't imagine a firefighter standing here this close to the house if the house on fire, but he may be over here somewhere. But he was, he was referring to those three or four houses that burned about three years ago, the northern part of Hammarock, and the experience they had, and it's really concerned because of, because of the lot.
No, I get that, I get that, yeah.
Most of the lots in this area, they're all like this.
Right. So we're kind of starting over here, so it's fine for him to make the recommendation. I guess we'll have to hear what you think about the recommendation.
Well, I guess about the fire chief.
I think the planning...
But I think you need to address at least the means of egress from the accessory dwelling.
The plan I have doesn't show, I will have to get back to you on that, because, um, I don't think you can get a building permit unless he, he may have changed the plan, but I haven't spoken to the architect to prepare the files.
Do we have any other comments?
Yeah, because there really isn't, to the accessory dwelling, there's not a front door, per se, other than through the garage.
I will check with him on that. But as far as the parking, parking in the garage is through the accessory dwelling.
Right, but let's just say you had, you, let's just theoretically say this all got approved and you're, someone's living there and they have a visitor. That visitor's not going to go through the garage or to open up the garage door. Like, there needs to be a door into the unit.
I will check that out with the building department and the architect to see if they can provide a response to that.
Okay.
You know, the building code may say something different about that, but I'm, I'm not familiar with that, but I'll check into it with that, and that certainly is a concern.
May I?
Other than that, I feel we need the criteria for the accessory dwelling. It's pretty straightforward.
And you'll also address the fire department comments?
Oh, have we addressed them?
You will.
Yes, I will. We just got these today.
And how do we address the problem that Laura identified?
As far as what?
As far as the parking goes?
I don't see an issue with the parking. That's a parking easement for that property, it's registered land. She has an easement on it. There's, the, the only way to get an easement back or to give that, yep, is the owner of that house. They have to agree to give that, the use of that land back to the property owner.
No, the owner of that house would have to stop paying the taxes.
Right.
Is what I heard.
That's correct.
Spells it out. Spells it out. Um, may I?
Uh, let me just make sure I don't have anything else. I think that was everything on my list. Yes, go ahead.
All right, um, I'm a big proponent of accessory apartments.
Pardon?
I'm a big proponent of accessory apartments. I think they're a wonderful, wonderful thing. My concern here is a couple of issues. First is the parking, the easement, the, um, idea that 91, whatever, Hammarock...
Beach.
Beach has to pay those taxes in perpetuity or loses the easement at, for 91 Hammarock Beach. The other thing is, I'm very, very concerned about the fire department and what they have to say. I think it's a huge intense use of this property. There is the issue of access egress. There's also the issue that the homeowner is almost saying that this is somewhat of hardship. That's why she's putting in this accessory apartment, which will enable her to, to maintain the house. Her hardship is not our dilemma. And as far as I'm concerned, that has nothing to do with anything. This, this house...
Well, I would, I would say, Anne, that the purpose of the accessory dwelling bylaw is to allow people who can no longer physically or financially maintain it.
I understand that, you're right, however...
So the purpose of the bylaws...
There, but, but Steve, I have to tell you, as far as I'm concerned, the zoning board of appeals gave them a Section 6 finding, and they're taking a house that was, this is the house that originally existed, and now we're putting up that house.
Right, which is, which is not our purview, right?
Not our purview, but the accessory...
It's not a house, it's not an accessory dwelling yet.
No, and so our purview is the accessory apartment.
Correct.
And again, the only access is through the garage. I think Richard is absolutely correct in terms of if you're having guests, they're going to have to go through the garage and around the cars to get in there. And there's no other way out.
There's no other way out.
There's no other way out, then it's a moot point.
Yeah, that's an initial point, right?
Yep. I'm done.
Great.
Enough.
Other comments?
I had a question.
Sorry, I skipped over you.
No, it's okay.
Assuming that there was no accessory dwelling, so I guess it's more a question maybe to Laura, and someone just built this house, would they have to have the garage? What's the, what are the, what does it say? I guess I'm trying to figure out the parking.
They, they don't have to have a garage.
So technically, those parking spaces, they don't really need, if I'm, I was trying to understand, because if, as Paul said...
They have somewhere to park. They're required to have parking for the house.
But somewhere off-street, okay, that's...
On, you know, that's...
On the lot, right?
So, if they built this house with no accessory, and let's just say the garage was a big family room, something that was not parking, could they build it? You're saying no.
I, I think they'd have a problem.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand is...
I don't think there's room, you know, I mean... I don't think there's room, you know, I mean, maybe you could park a car parallel. You know, you might get one car in there, but I think it'd be unrealistic.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, because again, like with, you know, our review is of the accessory. Like what can be built now if there wasn't an accessory? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I think your review is aimed at making this a good development. It's not just approving like the bare minimum. It's, it's how do we make this a development that's, you know, or a project that's going to function well and, and be good over the long term? As opposed to just, you know, meeting some, like marginal standard.
Right. However, technically, if we say no, they could build this and not have it be an accessory dwelling. Like put a, put a doorway through it and just say it's part of the house and.
Let's, let's think about that for a minute. You've got a property that's in the velocity zone. It's got to be raised. When there are storms, there's going to be, you know, issues with getting people in and out of, of this area. There could be issues getting emergency services in there. Yeah, I think there's, it's questionable whether you really want to have a more intense use of the property in this area to begin with. But that's not really what's in front of the board. That's something that the bylaw doesn't address at this point. So I think it does make a difference whether there's that accessory dwelling there or there's no accessory dwelling there as far as, you know, that the property's going to function a little differently.
Yeah, well, definitely that would be the case, right? And that's what we need to assess here.
Yeah, particularly where she's describing it as a rental and, you know, it's going to provide some income and so on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Reggie?
Yeah, a couple things. They may, I may not apply tonight. But with the fire department and sprinklers, for me personally, if the fire department says they want sprinklers, I, to me, that's a deal breaker. You've got to put them in, just so we know where I stand. And with the egress too.
Read his comments closely.
I read them.
The reason I say that is.
It's in your court.
I'm just saying, it may not apply tonight.
Doesn't matter that it's recommended. You have every right to require it.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, it may not apply tonight. We're here about the accessory dwelling. But to me personally, the sprinklers and the egress are deal breakers. Just so you know where I stand. But the other thing I have a problem with that matters tonight is the, I'd like the parking situation to be a little more stable. That whole two-sevens taxes and down the road, they could lose it. That, that concerns me a little bit. I'm not going to lie.
That kind of a situation, I deal with deeds and land issues all the time. That is not unusual. When you have an easement on someone else's property. If, if that was a shed or a barn, okay? I, I have that situation where I have a shed on my neighbor's property. I paid his portion of the taxes for the shed. If I don't pay it, he can just reuse it. The parking for that house, parking for that house, there is never parking on that lot for that house. Because decks, decks came all the way back to here. This is why we couldn't do perk test on this lot until the house was down. She had open wooden decks all, all the way back to here and the house went out to here. The only parking for this lot was always here. This is why they've got the easement from the Moses. Right now, she's, she's renting this house right here. It's either here or here. She's renting the house while this is under construction. And her plan is to move in an accessory dwelling and her daughter's going to live in the main house. I mean, the parking's not an issue. They required two spaces for the accessory dwelling. They're right here, I'm showing, it's well documented. This, this is not an issue. I don't see them ever not paying taxes for this. The taxes aren't that much anyway, because it's vacant land. It's not buildable where that easement is. And easement does devalue the property because you, that's, this area that would normally be buildable can't be buildable because these people gave an easement over.
The whole property is.
I mean, I don't see, I, I don't feel the parking's an issue.
Must be getting tired because your argument makes a certain amount of sense.
What's that?
Being a little flippant. I mean, if, if the parking for the house is, is part of the easement, then your argument is it's part of the easement, therefore it's out of the purview of this. We're looking at accessory dwelling only.
We could condition the accessory dwelling occupancy permit on taxes being current. If they're not, we pull it.
Yep.
No, the parking for the accessory dwelling is inside the house.
I understand.
Okay, it's on the lot.
I understand.
It's like that infectious invalidity situation there.
The parking, that takes into place the, whether or not infectious invalidity applies to whether or not you could build on the lot. This is parking, this is something different.
I just said it's, it's a similar.
This, this situation is by no means unique to properties of Hammarock.
I'm not saying it's unique. I think the question is, how do we address it, right?
Why do you have to address it at all?
Because we don't want her not to pay the taxes and have no place to park or they end up parking all over the place.
Who's she?
The, the owner of the property.
That's going to live in the accessory dwelling?
Or whoever is going to live in the other side.
Well, if whoever lives on the other side, if they don't pay the taxes and they can't park, that, that's their problem.
Well, I thought the, I thought the owner of the building was the one who's paying the taxes.
The owner of the building?
Yeah. Because she's living in the accessory dwelling, she still has the obligation to pay the taxes, right?
It's up to her.
No, I mean, easement says that, right?
Yep.
But the person living in the accessory dwelling would have to pay the taxes?
Whoever signed for the easement has to pay the taxes.
Yeah, if the owner lives in the accessory dwelling, which is.
Whoever the owner is, yeah, at the time.
Yeah, whoever the owner is.
What I'm saying is if the person who lives in the accessory dwelling is not the owner, then there's no issue with the parking.
Sure there is, because if the owner doesn't pay the taxes, then the owner's going to want to park there because they live there. And there's going to be no place to park.
You're saying the owner will want to keep the accessory dwelling spaces out of the garage and park there for a while?
No, they'll probably park all over the place, which is what we're trying to avoid. Probably end up parking in that little.
Right where the dog is.
Right.
They can't, it's, it's all sand.
They can't.
Huh?
I'll leave that when I see it.
Now, going forward, are we waiting to see like what the, the other thing? Like we've got some issues here with the, the septic, the, the fire chief. I mean, are we wait, besides, you know, divorce it from the fact that we don't have two means of egress, are we waiting to hear back from them?
I don't think that that's part of, of the accessory dwelling.
We have to know the accessory dwelling has, has septic.
Yes, that, that would be one of the conditions.
Right.
But I agree with Reggie as far as, restate it?
Which point?
Your concerns.
The deal breaker.
My concerns, and they may not apply tonight, you already said. But the, the egress and the sprinklers really concern me. And that's partly for down the road.
Right.
But just so you know where I stand.
Okay.
But, and the parking, I was, it just seems unstable, the situation. But you say it's normal over there and I get that. But I'm just worried about down the road, the years and years, maybe somebody else owns the property, I just.
And I, I think that you're correct. I agree with you. And if, regardless of what the fire departments, they would recommend, if we were to approve this accessory dwelling, one of the conditions would be that it be sprinkled. Can we do that?
Sure.
Sure we can.
I'm looking for the owner to come back and tell us that's what they want to do too.
Just happy, I'd be happy to sprinkle in my house.
Well, here's the other issue. If, if he rece, if they receive the building permit from the building department without sprinklers, that could only happen if the fire department chooses not to require them. Right, right now, they're recommending them. But in order to get a building permit, the fire department has to sign off on the building plans for the smoke detectors, fire alarms.
Okay, well.
You put the sprinklers in.
You've heard, you've heard our concerns, right? And.
No, but I just want the board to understand. I'm, you know, I'm going to ask for a 60-day continuance because we have that public hearing the other month before the health. But I'm just saying, if, if I come back here and we have the building permit and the issue of that sprinkler has been resolved, then it should be moved.
That doesn't hold anything with us.
Yep.
Pardon?
We're, we're addressing the accessory dwelling.
I just wanted to make sure you're clear, okay?
You can think about that, right?
So you're talking January, towards the end of January? January 26th. January 26th at 7:30.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for 91, 91 Hammarock Beach and extend the.
Hold on, let me just keep to. To January 26th.
And extend the public hearing to January 26th, 2017 at 7:30. Time to file a decision to February 10th, 2017.
Second.
Paul, is it fair?
Aye, aye. So, just so, we have a meeting on the 12th, is that correct?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 12th of January?
To January 12th.
The 12th and the 26th. Is that correct? I just wanted to verify that.
I would assume so, that's what I had.
Yep, that would be the second and the fourth.
Right, okay.
That is on the calendar, aren't they?
That's good. I'm going to be in San Francisco the 16th to the 20th, so that actually works perfect.
Oh, good.
And I'm going to be in Puerto Rico the 2nd to the 6th.
You've got all these great places. This place I went to was Buffalo.
I want to go to Cuba, but I think I better hurry up and do it.
Everyone says that before it gets ruined.
You know, Steve, you are.
Yep.
You know, I stand corrected about the homeowner and being able to stay in their house, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, you know, I apologize.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, that was the rationale for the.
Right, but.
Accessory dwelling requirement. But there's, you know, it has to be within the whole set of requirements for an accessory dwelling.
Right, and do we still maintain that the, the accessory dwelling has to have a family member in it or can be rented to anyone?
Oh, it can be rented to anybody.
Anyone, yeah. Okay.
But when they talk about maintaining a house, I think it's the house that they have. Maybe, maybe rehabbing it so that, you know, it's up to code.
Right.
But not necessarily expanding it, doubling the size of it, say.
I mean, by easily.
But that's, that's just the nature of the way our, our bylaws are written, right?
Well, I think when it says, you know, to allow someone to maintain their home, I, I don't think it means to expand it.
It's almost just.
It's almost a two-family.
Well, the fact of the matter is they could go build this house and then come back in and ask for an accessory dwelling as part of the house. There's no, there's nothing that prevents that.
The straight face test would.
Although, I agree with what you're saying. But if you remember Ingrid Lane, I think was a very similar situation. If I, if I'm thinking of the right one, where.
Ingrid Lane had an accessory.
Was it Ingrid? But they were basically building a new house.
Yeah, we've had this before.
Yeah, they wanted to be able, and he was, he lived in Brookline, he had multiple homes. But he says, oh, it's a hardship because I want to have this house and live in the accessory part of it, but build a bigger house.
It doesn't have to be a hardship. It's not required in the, in the purpose of the accessory dwelling bylaw that it, that they approve a hardship, right? There, there are multiple rationale for what.
Well, I, I agree, I'm just saying that we did.
It's a common sense aspect.
We did something like that recent, fairly recently.
I'm just telling you, this is what we've established as our bylaw. So we, we should stick to those at least, right? And, and it says, make housing units available, right? Provide a variety of types of houses to meet the needs for residents and workers. I mean, there's a lot of criteria in here where it used to just say it was, you know, affordable, right? It used to be just tied into affordable, if I remember right.
No, this hasn't changed. This has always been there since, um.
No, I think, this changed, the purpose changed, didn't it?
No.
No.
That's always been the purpose.
It's always been.
Has it?
Yep.
Well, then maybe we added the accessory dwelling as opposed to just the affordable accessory dwelling.
We got rid of the affordable, didn't we?
No, it's in here.
We don't do the affordable anymore.
The paperwork is enough to kill you.
530.4 is still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We thought about that a bit. Okay.
Where are we?
Yeah.
We're on money business, et cetera. Set amounts for 50 country way performance bond.
No, we, uh. Things are moving ahead very nicely with 50 Country Way. They went and talked to the historic commission last night. And the historic commission did vote to approve raising the house. And they asked for something, a couple of interesting things. I think the most interesting was they want a plaque talking about how this is a replica of the original house and all that kind of stuff. Inside, and that just seemed like a really nice thing and kind of a tribute to all the work that you all did.
But they agreed.
But they agreed to that anyway.
They already agreed to that, but it's going to be on the outside.
Yeah, it's supposed to be on the outside.
Yeah, we thought it was on the outside, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, anyway, they.
Okay, maybe there's one on the inside and one on the outside.
They discussed it. So things are, are ready to move ahead and we just need to set the amount of the performance bond. We had John Chessie look at it. He came up with 533,600, which, you know, is a good amount. And that's really mostly the site improvements. There was a breakdown of that, which, which you got, so.
How did they resolve the sewer issue?
I don't think they have, that, that has not been resolved yet.
Right, so they're not ready to move, right?
They're, they're as ready as we all can get them to be. But no, they haven't resolved all the infrastructure issues yet.
The container's ready.
And then, and John's analysis included enough money in the performance bond to cover the administrative costs of having to go through that? Like cover his costs and stuff? You know what I mean? If we end up having to go that route, we need somebody to manage all that and.
Go with which route?
Have to take the performance bond, right? I'm just thinking of all the work you and Karen just did on this other one.
He has a 15% contingency in there, which is.
I wasn't thinking of contingency, I was thinking of a line item to pay for the project management of completion.
You know, it would, they don't usually have those in there because they're, it's just a guarantee. It's not really anticipating that we're going to have to take them and use it. But, you know, we can, we can add something in there for it. And we could, you could probably crank it up to, you know, 575 or something like that to.
How much did you recommend?
533,600.
Just looking for that list.
We had, uh. He took the contractor's estimate and he did add on sewer, water, and retaining walls. And then he. He came up with about 70,000 for the contingency. But yeah, you might make it like 575.
I would, I would, my suggestion was, would be to add a line item that's essentially project management. And carve out, you know, whatever he thinks is the right percentage. I mean, I, we can pick a number here tonight, right?
Let's just pick a number.
That's okay with me. Because the contingency and inflation ought to address inflation of all those costs, not his costs, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't think we wanna be in the position where you or somebody else is managing this performance bond, right?
No, we didn't do that with Long Tree Hill, for instance.
Right. So I would just suggest that as kind of a typical approach to these, we include a line item to cover, you know, sort of outside engineering and project management costs to prosecute this thing if we have to, right? And then as they draw it down, we can change that percentage. It could get smaller if, you know, if we reduce this number as we go through.
What's the number, the base number that John gives?
533,600. So you could crank it up to 600,000 even.
That seems like a lot.
I would put at least probably 10% or something like that for his cost, right? The base cost, which is for 64.
Make it 370.
So add--
586, something like that.
Yes, sir.
It's about 587,000.
I would be okay with that. What do you guys think?
What was the number?
She's at 587 total.
Compared to 533.6.
It works for me.
Works for me.
50 cents.
So, we had--
So we have a motion?
I move to accept a performance bond for 50 Country Way, precondition 29E of the mixed-use special permit, decision dated 5/21/15, an amount of $587,000. The bond will cover parking, landscaping, walkways, and other amenities, including the emergency egress path, access egress path, plus project management.
Second.
Are we trying to list everything? Because we didn't save water and sewer.
Well, just say other amenities, I guess, we can certainly add water, sewer, parking.
Let's do that, just because we've sort of articulated--
Okay, so we're adding water and sewer.
I will second as amended.
All is in favor?
Aye.
704 Country Way.
704?
That was the--
What do we need to do with that?
We like to get the plans, some of the site plans, recorded at the registry. And particularly, I think, for common driveways, it's a really good idea because action is gonna be very important to the people, you know, living near it, and it's good for them to see exactly what was approved.
So do we need a motion, or are we just signing something, or?
Yeah, a motion.
I move to endorse the common driveway and stormwater permit plan for 704 Country Way, lots 1A and 2A revised dated 11/30/16 by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., as it is consistent with the plan approved by the planning, by the board and the Conservation Commission on which the order of conditions is based.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
2018, fiscal year 2019 budget.
What's this, Raj?
So-- We had sort of a short timeframe to get the budgets done this year. We were also told that the budgets would have to be level funded this year, so that's where I'm headed. And one of the things at the same time, well, so that's the direction that I got, that's not exactly where we ended up. Because I believe that we really are considerably understaffed in terms of what we try to do. In addition to everything we do here, we're working on the green communities, we're working on economic development pretty extensively. I'm getting involved more and more with coastal issues, and to do all that, you just need a little more, you know, strength in your numbers, and--
You're talking about manpower.
Talking about manpower. So what we had done last year was, we put in for a shared, it would be an assistant planner slash conservation enforcement officer. And I felt, you know, easy enough to just put in for that again this year. So I'm doing that, and the fallback position, if we don't get that, is some hours for a part-time enforcement person along the lines of someone like Brian Stewart, who we had last year, the former police chief, who was really very good at enforcement, planning for it on stormwater and other things. So that would be the fallback. I think it would be better to get a full-time person that we would share with another department, but that still probably would allow a little more flexibility than Brian just has. It would be about 10 hours a week, kind of thing.
So is the 43.5, does that reflect a part-time person?
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
Yeah. Yeah, that, about 33-- 7, so about 36 of that is the part-time person. And then, another type of help that I thought we could really use, and this would be on a very part-time basis, but when we have commercial applications, like the microbrewery was a really good case in point. And then there are other people that come through the town that have different issues and difficulty understanding what different departments are asking for, and they feel like they're just jammed, and they wind up-- You know, we wind up trying to be very helpful, but it takes a lot of time and kind of effort that we're not-- Things we're not used to doing, and they're really not too able to get from, you know, from the town. So, what that other 7,000 that's included in there would cover would be something like a permitting ombudsman, someone like the Economic Development Commission's consultant, who, you know, you could bring in, you know, he's worked in towns, he really understands permitting. And he would just be sort of a objective party to help someone understand why the sewer capacity is really important, you know, to a town. And other things that, I can explain till I'm blue in the face, but somebody from outside, I think, just might have a little better, you know, angle. So-- And I admit to not having discussed that with EDC yet, you know, I think it does kind of involve them too, but it would be under the planning board's budget. And those are really the only changes from last year. So again, I'm not sure that we have a prayer of getting either of those things, because, you know, we were told absolutely no staffing, absolutely level funded, but if you don't put them in, then I think you sort of lose your opportunity to talk about what's good for your department.
So if we don't get this additional support, what and how do you prioritize what you don't do?
It's always a problem.
It is a problem.
Yeah.
And help me, what was it, a year ago or two years ago, we hired someone for a position to help with the elevation grants, but also shared? Isn't that a--
Uh, no, that morphed into, you know, much more than someone to help with the elevation grants. That turned into the Coastal Resources Officer.
Okay.
So she now has, she did take over the elevation grants, which is great, although, you know, from time to time, it's not completely clear if we're gonna keep doing those, because they are really just hard to administer. But she does those, and she's gotten all kinds of grants for the town. Like, millions of dollars in grants.
All right. That was a good, I guess, a good hire, I guess, and then something similar, and this position could morph into other things.
I think too, we are short-staffed all over the place. We're short-staffed in conservation, Board of Health, here. And you're only as good as your people. And there's so much going on, so much building. We're looking at more development as the economy theoretically heats up, has already heated up. And I am a huge proponent of, the more help we have, in a sense, it saves us money. And these things can be done through administrative fees, et cetera. We need more help. It took so many years to finally get an assistant to the building inspector. We shouldn't have to fight for this type of thing. But if we have to, we have to.
Well, I think there will always be the notion that you have to justify the--
Right.
I understand.
The support you need, and I think, at least, I think we're fairly consistent with the notion that Laura could use some additional help here.
Yes, absolutely. And so how do we go to bed for that?
I mean, even the small thing, you came up with this, you know, repaving the path and all that kind of stuff. That's a body of work that you weren't planning on doing, right?
Yeah.
That somebody has to do. And I think it's that kind of thing, we need to make sure that there's at least some opportunity to keep those things moving, so that it doesn't take three years to do something like that, you know?
Well, and I think in one of the things I read that was coming from you, Laura, I believe, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that the planning department had been more, like, administrative regulatory, like, reacting to things as opposed to actual planning, because there was so much to do, and that this would potentially kind of maybe refocus the planning board back on, or planning department, back on more sort of long-range things. It's a great segue.
Well, ideally, I mean, we could, we could take on a master plan.
Which we need to.
We're way behind on that, but we just can't possibly--
Right, right. So I would certainly--
We need to budget a separate effort for that?
We should, yeah. Yeah, I mean, did people feel like putting in for that fiscal year 18? I mean, it would probably be on the-- You know, we tried to do it the last time around, I think it was with 50,000, I think then we got cut down to 40,000. It just was not enough. We're having that problem now with the open space plan. There really wasn't enough budgeted. So, the firm that's doing it, they're doing it, but, you know, they're-- It's certainly not worth their while to do it. And we wanna have a selection of people to choose from for some of these things. You know, so I think if you're really gonna go after an open, a master plan, it should be, you know, around, probably around 100,000.
And FY '18 starts July 1st, just so I understand, is that correct?
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to say about the budget is, there are the goals and objectives in here. And some of these are kind of consistent year in and year out. We have the one about making sure the land use regulations are applied fairly inconsistently and so on. So, that one, I don't think-- Well, that, I did include the permitting ombudsman under that one. Then there's one about developing and refining tools for management and regulation of coastal development. And that's one where we will be working, at least, I'll be working and I'll be, you know, reporting into you on some new regulation for development, mostly in the velocity zone and possibly in some other high-hazard areas along the coast. The open space plan has--
Just to go back to that, as you think about the elements of this? And I don't know if you really sort of integrated this in, but we should be thinking about sea level rise too, right? The impact, not just the short term, what's gonna happen in the next couple of years. So it seems to me we ought to be thinking about this on a, if we're gonna plan, we ought to plan on a long horizon in the next year or two, right?
Yeah.
We ought to try to integrate that concept in here.
Yeah, I will try to work that in, and there are three or four departments that are all tied into that same goal, so we'll all, you know, we're all sharing that goal, but we can, you know, I'll see if we can all work in something on sea level rise in there. You know, I think we just add a phrase at the end, you know, "Given the vulnerability of these properties to coastal storms and sea level rise," something like that. So, there's some overlap between the open space plan and some of the things that you all have talked about. We had our first public meeting on that, actually, just this week, and--
Unfortunately, I missed that, I meant to be there.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was actually, it had a nice tone to it, it was, you know, kind of a more pleasant meeting than some of the ones that, you know, we wind up having over, you know, super controversial things. But, one thing that came up was the potential to eliminate rat-tail lots. And, you know, you all talked about that, I know you were really interested in it.
It came up at the public meeting?
Yeah, yeah, somebody brought that up. Someone in a neighborhood that has some rat-tail lots in it.
Ran into it, right?
But, you know-- And then, another thing that comes up, has come up in multiple places, is just looking into what it would mean to increase minimum lot sizes. Not necessarily in the west end, where you have a 40,000 square foot lot size, but in the areas east of 3A where you're working with a 20,000 square foot lot, it's just, can be a little tight. There are some new houses going up right on First Parish Road. The houses are big, the lots are, I think, just the bare, kind of 20,000, 22,000 square feet, and, you know, the houses are a little jammed in there. So, again, it wouldn't necessarily have to be going to 40,000 square feet, maybe 30, you know, whatever.
Does it tie into the open space plan? That's really sort of a density issue, isn't it? I mean, because it's not gonna, changing lot size wouldn't necessarily increase open space, right?
They just build out further.
Yeah, they'll use that lot, right? They'll still put a big house on the lot, right? But it doesn't necessarily create sort of contiguous open space.
No, it's not open space from the standpoint of not consuming land. I mean, that's one way that's, you know, most people think of open space. It's more making sure that each, each house has the space that it needs, and that it's not so jammed that you're having a feeling of congestion.
Well, one of the things--
It has to be, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Excuse me, Steve. One of the things that we had talked about a number of years ago was a certain percentage of, you know, a house would be a certain size.
Like a lot coverage?
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage ratio?
Yes. So that you can only cover on a 20,000 square foot lot so much. As opposed, and we're talking about, maybe we need to increase the setbacks around the house so that they can only be so big. Unless it's--
Right. I think it's also gonna be dependent upon where the property's located. Because we also wanna take advantage of density for the transit-oriented, you know, development, right? I mean, that's, that really is part of what you wanna try to accomplish, is get more density around transit sites, right?
I think that this is more toward a First Parish Road, you know, those little side streets, subdivisions, what have you, that--
How much land will this really affect?
At this point, not much.
We always think not much, but then there's more and more that just kind of comes out of the woodwork, so--
Well, you know, look at the houses that are going up on 3A in Cohasset.
Yeah, the Toll Brothers development there, yeah.
Once they cancel.
Is that what we want?
Well, we're about to find out.
Are we?
Right. For the grants.
We haven't, we haven't gotten anything yet.
What's the development they've always talked about, coming in in January?
What's the development that Paul was talking about coming into January?
Oh, there's just been some discussion of development around where Pittsville is. So anyway, well, thank you. I don't know if you had any other thoughts on this, you know, a lot of it is just kind of rehashing.
Well, I thought it was interesting.
Recreational marijuana.
The recreational marijuana, because we're now out of the medical marijuana phase into the recreation, right? And we do have some regulation around the medical marijuana stuff, right? Do we need to go further on that?
Yeah, Green Bush.
I think we should put it in a truck and have, or select with license, like they do ice cream.
Really? And I think too, we can start growing it in two weeks. Let's go for it.
Six, six plants, I think, right?
Yeah, six per person, not to exceed 12 per household. Don't ask me why I know all these things.
But right now, we...
So at some point, maybe it's not for fiscal year 18, but maybe in fiscal year 18, we ought to be looking at, putting a goal in here that's looking at a master plan, right? For, for the next year, right? That kind of thing, so we get it budgeted and planned and all that? I mean, how long has it been since we did the last master plan?
2004.
Yeah, right, that's a long time.
It is, yeah.
But, I mean, what, the process here is like, you can put stuff in, there's no guarantee that you're going to get that, right? So in your mind, is it better to do like what Steve said and put like this as a goal? Or just to go ahead and just say, let's just put it in as a line item and see what happens? Which is better?
No, I think if it's, if it's a line item, it probably should be in the goals, but...
Well, what I heard Steve say...
We're talking about a line item for fiscal year 18.
Yeah, I think we should put something in there that addresses master plan, even if it's, you know, fiscal 18 becomes the year that we try to put all the pieces together, put the budget together and all that, and put a plan together for execution, right?
Okay.
But we ought to, we ought to have something that says, we're working our way towards the next master plan.
So developing a program for how to do a master plan.
So potentially that in FY '19, when we come up with this request for funds, it's been, it's all been documented.
Been laid out, and yeah.
And there may be money through...
We have a schedule around it and all of that too, right? At least a rough schedule about...
And there may be money through MIPC too, for master plans.
Ooh, that would be nice.
Yes, very nice. So we'll work on that as well.
Okay.
Should we implementation, for implementation in 2019?
Yeah, we can say that.
It's a goal.
To give them a heads up that we're coming.
I might find some way to reword number three, talk about long-range planning in general, and...
Yeah, two sub-items there, one is a master plan, and the open space and recreation plan, right? I would expect the open space and recreation plan just dovetail into the master plan, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the thing, is if we get going on it pretty soon, we've done a bunch of pieces, we've done the open space plan, we did a housing plan not that long ago, we did the economic development plan.
Right.
So...
When will open space be done?
We're working on a timeline, probably the next three to four months.
Big crowd the other night?
Yeah, actually, there were, maybe 30 people.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna just modify it and send us the final version?
I'm gonna modify it, send you a final version, I do have to get it in by tomorrow.
Wow.
Go forth and prosper.
So we're doing this thing between now and tomorrow.
We'll take a, we'll take a parallel submittal copyright, you can send it to us in parallel.
Good. All right, so we have some bills.
Move to pay $88 to Walker Electric for removal of temporary electric service for Kimberly Estates from surety that the planning board has voted to seize. I like that. Move $195 to Merrill Corporation Construction Engineering Inspections for 105 Haveli Road. Move $455 to Merrill Corporation Construction Engineering Inspections for 6 Old Country Move $910 to Merrill Corporation Construction Engineering Inspections for 35 Dreamwall Road Common Driveway.
All in favor?
Aye.
With our single signature.
Get ready to move the old school.
Yeah, I saw that today.
Yeah, it's me. It's me.
Okay. Okay, minutes.
Move the minutes of November 10th, 2016. Is everybody here? You can't, sorry.
Second?
Same document as you sent. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything on liaison report or town planner report? Got any of that?
I have a question, just so it doesn't really fall into either of those.
Oh, no, it's not on our list.
Uh-oh.
I know.
We can talk about it.
Well, it's about tonight, I was just thinking about like the Union Street proposal, is there a way that they should have come before us like informally?
They're supposed to do a pre-application review, but they're supposed to do a town planner, right?
Yeah, they are, no, I don't know.
Because I just was thinking about like, they went through this whole, like he said, they went through this whole process, they went to design review committee, then they went, they got all the engineering, and then it was like, okay, we had kind of a base problem with the old idea in general, right? So if they would have come before us as a, as a preliminary or as a informal...
It might have helped.
I guess, is there any...
There's a requirement, right? That's kind of the way it's set up, right? If you look at 560 point, I think it's like eight or something like that.
I know other people have done that where it's been very informal and they just say, hey, what do you guys think about it?
Special permit review procedure, right?
He came in half a dozen times.
Pre-application meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Right? A pre-application meeting with a town planner prior submittal is strongly encouraged, and then the review process, right? So, I mean, really, this pre-application thing is probably what would be recommended for anything like this.
I just was thinking maybe somehow we could, we could streamline it or make it better or maybe more encouraged, I don't know, talking, but is there a better way to do it? Because I do feel bad if they go through that whole process, it's been money.
Don't make choices. Some of them aren't necessarily the best choices.
You're right. I think the way we've laid it out in the bylaw, which says, we strongly recommend you at least contact the town planner, I think Laura will flag whether they think they, she thinks they should come in and just have an informal conversation, pre-application.
Yeah, I think with something like that, I would have suggested that they come in and talk to you because it's, yeah, it's, it's one of those things, it could go either way, you know, and...
So I'd agree with you there, I think, I think we should have, you know, for something like this, probably, you know, a chance to have the informal discussion before you spend too much money on it.
And speaking of that, spending too much money, 50 Country Way, they still don't have their sewer thing, and I, for one, do not understand why, if the main down country way is inadequate, that was not known when all of this started, however long ago.
Well, I think that, that sort of speaks to sort of the silo-type approach we have here, right, is that we don't, we don't have responsibility for the sewer connection, right, but we should have, we should have some analysis or indication of all of the infrastructures available, right, and adequate.
They are changing their approach over in DPW as a result of that, and that's why they were talking about it with, for Union Street, was they're starting to ask everybody to provide information on their flows and the size of the pipe, and, you know, the analysis of whether it's going to work or not, and it should be coming from them.
Yeah, maybe we should have that before we make a decision, right? Instead of saying, okay, we'll wait till, we'll approve this and let them go get that question answered later.
Yeah.
It's really a question of whether you do it now, or whether you condition your approval on them doing it.
Well, and that gets back to the point that I made a number of meetings ago, that we really need to have items in writing from these different departments. They all receive plans, and the reason given that they don't, or have, they're responding far better now than they have been, well, they're just too busy. Well, if they're too busy, then obviously they need more help, because it's just, time is money. And to have this situation suddenly appear after so many years and so much money, I have a real problem with that.
I don't know if it's money or as much as it's a priority.
Yeah, it's putting the priority on, on responding to their, to the question, right? And getting enough information so that they can, they can have a response that they can rely on is, is a good response, right? I mean, the fire department responded, right? They said, we think you should have sprinklers in this particular location, and they're usually pretty good at responding to these things. From the water and the sewer perspective, it's sort of a...
Not so much.
Right?
But Laura does push the fire department to respond, she really, she really has been pushing hard to get them, and that's why they're getting a response.
That's good.
She's really been working on that.
That's good. I think we should add the DPW to that, from the infrastructure point of view, particularly with the wastewater problem, right, the sewer problem, in that it's not just the physical size of the pipe, but it's, what are we doing with that discharge and is there capacity in the plant, right?
Well, I think they're starting to look at, and they're also, it's, it's more than the analysis part of it, it's like what you were talking about at the beginning, the aspect that we're all in these silos. I think they're starting to kind of come to the door, anyway, of the silo, and you can kind of talk to them, where in the past, it was not that way at all here. I mean, you...
And we sort of defaulted by saying, okay, get your permits from these other places. I mean, you, you know, it's not effective until you have all these permits, but it's probably a better decision-making process if we have input upfront on a lot of the key variables, right? To say, okay, we're comfortable that all the major, you know, material elements have been checked off, and yeah, maybe there's, there's some design tweaks that have to happen after the fact and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, the sewer capacity is available and the town can handle it, right? The water capacity is available, the, you know, the fire department can respond to emergencies, et cetera.
Yeah.
It seems like what we should be checking the box on.
Well, we should, but I mean, I know DPW also feels that's, you know, that's their purview to do, which is fine, but I think they need to be part of our process.
I'm not saying that we physically do it, I'm saying we, we want to make sure we get that input from the DPW before we say, okay.
I agree, yeah.
Before they've gone to all these design, design review meetings and all these other things, and talking about brass kick plates and everything when they just don't have any idea if their, if their sewer flow is going to overwhelm the system.
Rearranging depth chairs at times, you know, so...
Yeah.
I think that, that's good, that we're starting to get that response from the fire department, and if we can get the same sort of process set up with DPW.
The other thing that I think we have to do is put, we need to have a response within 48 hours before the hearing, before the meeting. That is not unreasonable when they have been given these plans weeks in advance. I don't think that's unreasonable, I really don't. And once upon a time, they did, but then it sort of fell by the boards, and now we're getting that into...
There's more and more development pressure.
Right.
You know, we get comments of the day of, and then the proponent hasn't seen them.
And that's not fair.
Or we haven't seen them.
Right, that's not fair.
And it just causes us to push, you know, the meeting to the next step.
So I think 48 hours is reasonable.
Well, I think there's kind of a momentum issue that goes the opposite way, which is that as you get closer to the meeting, and people are commenting, people want to comment back, and then some people want to comment back again, and you just get closer and closer, and sometimes you're not resolving anything, but somebody coming in here really wants it to look like everything's resolved, and so...
Yeah, there's definitely that iteration process where people are commenting, and then you have to resolve those comments, and I, I agree with that, but you should, our objective should be to get it all in.
Yeah, as a goal.
We cannot have a developer sit in front of us and have a letter from the DPW telling he or she that, yes, this is fine, and you can do this, this, and this, and we've never seen the letter, nor have we read it. That's what I have a problem with.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure if that was really the case. I'm not sure.
I mean, that may not have passed the straight face test, but how can you say to the applicant that we don't believe you when they're waving this letter around?
And that's been a problem here for, for a long, long time.
They share the letter.
Wake up over there and copy us on stuff.
Seriously, yes.
I don't know what their problem is, why they don't...
Like the sewer connection on the, was it the drive with the planned unit development?
Off of Haveli.
That's, that was my point. That was my point, and it's...
But if we set it up as it's part of the requirement of what we need to see from the developer, then the developer's sort of in this position where he has to push to try to get all this stuff in, right? And at least somebody's motivated to get it in on time.
Well, we can, you can adopt, like, guidelines, it might be termed regulations in the zoning bylaw, you can adopt like procedural rules for site plans that just you vote on, and they're not part of zoning, but they're like connected with zoning. So, you know, I think you may be able to get some of those things in that way.
And I think we should.
Yeah. I think that's one of the things that's in the work program for next year.
Okay. Yeah, make sure it's on our goal next year.
Yeah.
By tomorrow.
Then, you know, then in point of fact, I think it's pointless to require a developer to come up with umpteen copies of a plan that's shifted out to everybody and nobody looks at it. It's a waste, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money, it's a waste of resources.
Yeah, but you, you know, if what you're asking is the fire department, or the DPW or somebody to evaluate this from their perspective, you have to give them the data.
I agree.
If they choose not to read it, you know, that's, we can't make that happen, right? But we have to give them the information, because otherwise, you know, they're not going to be able to make a decision.
Well, once upon a time, for a very, very short period of time, the selectmen wanted to see every development before it came into the planning board, that didn't last long, believe me.
They're not legally allowed to do that.
And, but they did. Hey, I tell you.
Yeah, they didn't, they decided they didn't want them anyway.
Who's, who's the selectman?
Yeah.
They don't want to get it to the sausage-making machine now.
No, no. Too messy.
Okay, so we have Bill's motion on the table.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we save all of this stuff for tonight?